Thank you, Robin. I have a public service announcement as well, which is that could you please remember when you leave the chamber this evening to turn your mobiles back on? Before we go any further, I would like to welcome to this the first full council since the by-elections two new councillors, although I can only see one of them. So, welcome, councillor Hyman. Right, item one, minutes. Confirm the minutes of the council meeting which took place on the 19th of July 2016. Are you agreed that I sign these as a correct record?
Yes.
Okay, I’ll sign those later, thank you very much. Apologies for absence. Mr Taylor, are there any apologies for absence?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. We have received apologies from councillors Kevin Deenis, Nicholas Holder, Carol King, Peter Martin, Kika Miralies, Libby Piper, Stephen Reynolds and Simon Thornton, Val Henry and John Ward.
Thank you very much. Item three, declarations of interest. In accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct, do any members have any non-procurnary or disclosable procurnary interest to declare? Mr Taylor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Pat Frost has declared a non-procurnary interest as a member of Farnham Town Council and a Surrey County councillor, and I believe councillor Lee was indicating as well.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. If I could declare a non-procurnary interest in item 60 on page 25 as the chairman of the Bourne Asset Community Group, and I shall be leaving the room when that’s discussed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any further declarations? Chancellor Williamson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I may have a procurnary interest. I registered to speak on the 6th of September at the executive meeting at that date to point out a factual error in the recommendation, to try and save any embarrassment at this meeting, but I was allowed not to speak because I had a procurnary interest. I’d like to point out that on that recommendation, that’s recommendation 32, it makes reference to Farnham Interest Group bringing a judicial review.
Sorry, councillor Williamson. Councillor Williamson, this is not the time for making these...
No, I’m trying not to make a speech. There is a fundamental error in that recommendation. It says the Farnham Interest Group, and there is no such... There is no... Leave was not given for a review by the Farnham Interest Group, it was by a series of individuals.
Thank you for pointing that out. Are you declaring an interest or not?
Well, if it’s a Farnham Interest Group judicial review, then it’s some other review which I’m not aware of, and I have no interest and I could stay. If it’s the judicial review, which I believe it is, of which I am a named part of, then I will certainly leave.
Thank you. Are there any other declarations? Councillor MacLeod?
Okay, Mr Mayor, I also have the same interest in the judicial review item, and I’ll be leaving the room at that point.
Thank you. Any others? No? Okay, thank you very much. Item four, the mayor’s announcements. I’d like to start off with my own comments on councillor Ellis. I can’t claim that he was my best friend, but he certainly, when I became vice-chairman of planning, took me to one side and gave me a great deal of good advice from the benefits of his experience on planning, and also when I became deputy mayor, he again took the opportunity to take me to one side and give me good advice, which I have found very useful. So, I will certainly miss him, and I’m sure all of us will. Second thing, I’d like to... We’ve mentioned the by-elections earlier, I’d just like to congratulate one of our members for becoming elected to Surrey County Council, so well done, Rook Wyatt, wherever you are. Thirdly, you may recall months and months ago that the previous mayor and the leader wrote to her Majesty with greetings on her birthday. We have a reply to that from Buckingham Palace, dated the 18th of August 2016. Dear councillor Band and councillor Potts, the Queen has asked me to convey her thanks for the message you have sent on behalf of the freemen and citizens of the borough of Waverley on the occasion of her Majesty’s 90th birthday. The Queen greatly appreciated your kind words and the assurance of your prayers. In return, her Majesty has asked me to send her warm good wishes to you and all concerned. Yours sincerely, Christopher Sandermass, Chief Clerk to the Queen. What have I been doing recently is we had a visit from the land rat of our twin borough in Monica Blent, and it was a very interesting three days for me, I learnt some things about the borough I didn’t know before, and discovered that the Lanth Chris is trying to find accommodation for 2,000 refugee families in an area the same sort of size as Waverley. Not over a period of years, but in this one year, so they are very much up against it in terms of finding space for that number of people. Can I remind you that on Thursday of this week is the volunteers’ reception at Charter House? Those of you who have submitted the names of volunteers, thank you very much, and I hope that you will be coming along, whether you’ve recommended volunteers or not, whether you would all like to come along to that afternoon to make sure that volunteers in our borough who do such wonderful things are recognised. And then lastly, I’d like to tell you that on the 3rd of December, the mayoress and I will be holding a charity masquerade ball at Clockbourne Hall, which I hope will be successful, and I hope some of you will buy tickets. Thank you very much. Five, questions from members of the public. Have we received any questions from members of the public?
None received, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Have any questions been received from members?
None received.
Have any motions been received from members?
None received, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. That brings us to item eight, the minutes of the executive. The leader of the council to present, please. Do you want to move the minutes of the 6th of September executive?
Mr Mayor, thank you. I’d like to move the minutes of the 6th of September executive. I believe I have a seconder.
Mr Mayor, I’m happy to second.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Part one, recommendations to council, starting with item 47, which is the Budget Management Report. And the Budget Management Report has one recommendation to council, which is on page 12. I believe there may be speakers on this item.
I’m sure there will be speakers on this item. I’m just waiting for our two declared interests to leave the chamber. Thank you. Do we have speakers? Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Good evening. On the 24th of May, members of the council agreed to authorise officers to obtain specific agreement from Cress Nicholson to mitigate the risks of a likely challenge. That included a... This is open information. It included specifically that they would pay half of the council’s costs. I understand from the executive meeting that the borough solicitor told us that that would not be the case, or wasn’t the case by then. I’d like clarification as to whether that has been achieved, because I understand that Cress Nicholson and Sainsbury’s are now a party to the challenge, and that further information would also be obtained before the council decides whether or not to risk defending the current challenge, and that other information, which we would have to go into exempt to speak about, that hasn’t been provided either. So, as a matter of process, and this is a process matter, I don’t think we can make that decision unless we alter the recommendation certainly, and the councils would need to agree a slightly different way forward. I’ve got a couple of problems. The first one, I don’t know whether you want to stop the clock on this one whilst... It might be my eyes deceiving me, but at the bottom of page 12, there is recommendation 32, which is what I’m speaking to at the moment, and if you go forward to page 19, at the top of that page, I’ve got a different recommendation, 32, that I’m not actually speaking to, and I don’t know whether you want to just take a second to decide which you want, what you want to call it, because I’ll need to know.
We are not immune to typographical errors, councillor Hyman, so we’ll renumber as necessary. Thank you.
The first thing that I’d like to cover really is the issue that councillor Williamson alluded to, that the judicial review is the applications by the Queen on the application of David Wild and others, and not by FIG, and so I think it would be advisable for us, that is my understanding. I’m not a member of FIG, and I have nothing to do with this judicial review, so we should reword it. I have put some wording together, which does go further, because I am not happy myself that the request for £230,000 on top of the £20,000 granted by the executive is justified, and I understand that by a code of conduct and good practice and the Nolent principles that we have to be able to justify our decisions. I cannot see how a case... I’ve been told by the borough solicitor this afternoon that after requesting the information that we’ve had £16,000 spent, I understand that’s not exempt information so far, we can reasonably estimate that the cost to the end of January, February is likely to be about £40,000, and the idea of us agreeing to allow £250,000 to be spent when we know from the executive papers that it told us that this was just an initial sum that was being asked for, they can come back, officers can come back and ask for more, I just don’t think that it’s the sort of thing that any council should be doing, if saying, okay, we know you need to spend £40,000, £50,000 altogether, and we’re going to allow you to try and scare the public with £250. I would like to propose a motion or amendment on those grounds, if I may, I have got a copy of it, and I think we would then need to go into exempt. I don’t know which to move first.
Thank you, Mr Hyman... Sorry, councillor Hyman. I’m not used to you being over that side yet. You wish to make a formal motion to amend this recommendation?
Yes, but I understand an amendment must not change the sense of the recommendation, so if I read it, then I think borough solicitor might be willing to... Be happy to advise whether it should be a motion or an amendment. Is that the correct way to approach it? Okay. If I can read it, it’s just a couple of minor changes, obviously to the end of it, to remove the word FIG, to make it... Make the council’s agreement subject to receiving the information which is necessary to assess the risk. In view of the small amount, the smaller amount that we would be agreeing at this stage, I could understand it if members were reticent not to junk this at this stage, they certainly wouldn’t want to see the recommendation overturned, and I appreciate that, and there’s not enough of us here to be able to do that, and I understand the situation. So, the recommendation is that, and this is the change, subject to officers obtaining a further opinion from leading council, and that’s in brackets in accordance with recommendation three exempt recommendation one and exempt financial report paragraph 8.4 agreed by council on 24th of May 2016, so that’s specific, and I’d be happy to discuss that further in exempt, a further supplementary estimate of £30,000.
I’m so sorry, but we can’t understand a word the councillor is saying. Over here, he’s speaking quite quickly, we don’t know what he’s actually asking us to do.
Thank you, councillor Frost. Yes, I have to agree, councillor Hyman, that it was slightly difficult to follow what you were saying. I’ll ask one of our officers to read... Oh, apparently it’s on the screen, I can’t see that, of course. So, you don’t really read to read that any further. Can I ask, do you have a seconder? We have a seconder, thank you. Right. Ladies and gentlemen, we have an amendment, it is validly seconded. Would anybody wish to speak to this amendment? Yes?
Point of clarification, does this... I thought amendments had to be... Retain the spirit of the original recommendation. To me, this is completely different and brings in all sorts of extra exempt information into what was quite a straightforward recommendation, so I would argue that this is not an amendment, that in fact this should be a motion.
Thank you. It is substantially the same idea, in that it is producing a further supplement. Okay, I’m going to ask the borough solicitor for his opinion.
I’m not sure that councillor Hyman quite understands what was meant regarding that a second legal opinion in that 24th of May decision. The way I would need to go in... I struggle, Mr Mayor, because I do need to go into exempt to explain that, because it is information that’s contained within the exempt recommendations in that 24th of May report, but I can explain why that is substantially different, but I appreciate you want to do these things in open, but I would have to refer to the exempt recommendation from the 24th of May meeting.
Councillor Frost?
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Mayor. I do agree with councillor Legall, this completely changes. We are talking about a specific amount of money to do a specific thing. This, as far as I am concerned, is changing the whole thing, and if we can’t actually... It’s unfortunate we’ve had the amendment now, thus not enabling our solicitor to actually come up with the actual answer, therefore what I personally, what I propose we do is we put the amendment now.
Councillor Legall?
Just to add, on a question of materiality, a supplementary estimate of £30,000 versus a supplementary estimate of £230,000, to me is substantially different, that it does not qualify as an amendment.
Well, I’m being told by voices to my left and right that they agree, I’m not sure that I agree, but we have it as an amendment, we have a second for it. If anybody wishes to speak, councillor Fraser does, then we can just vote on the issue after people have had an opportunity to speak to it. You are, of course, at liberty at any time to ask for the motion to be put. Sorry, I didn’t hear it. Well, the motion to be put is... Depends upon the mayor feeling that enough discussion has taken place. Since we haven’t had any discussion, I can’t agree to that. So, councillor Fraser?
Could I suggest that we go into exempt, please, to pursue this, to get the un已被 It seems that the borough solicitor is inhibited from giving us an explanation because we are not in exempt session, so I would think it would be a sensible thing to do.
We are... We’re not going to be making any decisions other than whether to allocate an amount of money, and there is no question that we need any further... Mr Serlin, any further information? But again, I’m being told that the borough solicitor is happy to come in here.
I can deal with some of this, I just can’t talk about the exempt recommendation one and the exempt financial report in this meeting in open. What I can say is that a figure of £30,000 will not be sufficient for this council to defend that judicial review. The figure that Mr Hyman... Oh, sorry, councillor Hyman, I do beg your pardon, has been given today by me, I don’t... I can’t recall whether you read that out, that it was just over £16,000 in terms of what we have paid to date. That does not include the costs that we will have... Well, we will be billed for taking the case to the point of having submitted our evidence in respect of what is called the preliminary issue, which will be heard in January. So, we’re yet to be billed for those costs. I estimate that at the moment those costs will be somewhere between £10,000 and £15,000, so it’s quite a lot of work that went into that process, so you can add that to what we’ve already paid. Then to deal with any prep that we will need to undertake, and then the hearing in January, you could probably add on another 15 to 20 onto that figure. And if I can be clear, the figure that you have before you, the 230 plus the supplementary estimate that’s already been agreed by the executive, so £250,000, deals with taking this case to its conclusion. Now, that could be a conclusion quite some time down the line, it could be a year down the line, it could be two years down the line. It depends on what the court decides in January, it depends what it might decide if it were to go further than that, it depends what it might decide if the council or the claimants were to appeal any decision. So, the £250,000 is to take us to... Is a reasonable estimate of taking us to the end of the process. It’s not saying that we are going to spend £250,000 defending this judicial review claim, but if necessary, if I can refer the council back to the decision it made in May, it decided to very clearly, robustly defend any judicial review claim that arose. That decision was made before we received any claim, in anticipation that we would receive a claim, and we knew where we would receive it from, and now the decision before you is whether to effectively fund that decision that you’ve already taken. It’s not... You are not here today to review that decision, you’ll recall, of course, that you’re within six months of that decision, you can’t do that anyway, you can’t change that decision now. So, the sum that you are talking about here is to take it through to its conclusion, not to the end of January.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There are two ways of dealing with an amendment like this. One is to be legal and go for non-materiality, another is simply to recognise that it is not a worthy amendment and to be prepared to vote it down. I entirely endorse what the borough solicitor said, this is an estimate, we hopefully will not spend it at all, but in my view, the recommendation is entirely proper, and when that comes, I will certainly support it, but I will vote against this particular amendment.
Having heard that, councillor Hyman, are you still insisting on this amendment? Do you have the opportunity to sum up?
Well, thank you, I thought I would have the opportunity actually to go into exempt session in order to obtain the explanation from the borough solicitor. I have the feeling that it would be an inconvenience to the public, it would be a waste of time trying to cover process issues when a decision has clearly already been made by members, so I will withdraw the motion rather than revise it to £50,000 or £60,000 or whatever, because I have the feeling that it would still be voted down, and so I will, I think, to save time and trouble, because we’ve got a big agenda, withdraw the motion.
Thank you very much indeed. So, we return to the original recommendation. Are there any speakers to this item? Councillor Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have to say, I resent and I’m happy to spend council taxpayers’ money, a quarter of a million pounds, in having to defend a judicial review, but having said that, I recognise that having received the judicial review, it must be strenuously defended. In my view, it is ill-advised judicial review, it is going to have the consequences of potentially delaying the development, which I think the majority of the people in Farnham would like to happen, and I... We have already heard that the estimate is the best estimate by our lawyers at this time to complete our defence, and I have every wish to support this recommendation, but as I say, I’m unhappy that council taxpayers’ money has had to be spent, but it does have to be spent.
Councillor Lee?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I’ll be brief, but Brightwells has been a corporate priority for this council for the last 14 years. It’s a regenerative scheme, it provides housing, it provides jobs and an income stream of up £800,000 to £900,000 per annum, and this is when this council is looking down the barrel of shorter, smaller, maybe no long-term grants from national government. The scheme was fully debated, and it was agreed back in May. The benefits were deemed to outweigh the disadvantages at that point, so we now have a judicial review. Quite clearly, there’s a misunderstanding about who’s bought it, but quite clearly it exists, and we’re in a situation now which sadly, as a councillor and as a resident, we have to fund to defend our position with taxpayers’ money. Mr Mayor, my personal opinion is that if we keep repeating referendums until one achieves the result that one wants, then that process in its very essence is churlish, ignorant of democracy, and simply fanciful. Brightwells was not a referendum, it was a scheme which has been thought through for many years, and it’s had tweaks and changes for many years, and it’s been discussed at length, and it’s been decided and been approved as such as a scheme. So, Mr Mayor, to summarise, my job, my professional job, takes me all over the world to some fantastic countries and cities, but equally, I see an awful lot of cities which are shocking, okay? They have real social issues, so I’m baffled, quite frankly, sometimes when I hear this group, whoever they may be, who think and want to address this scheme in some kind of order of Armageddon, because quite frankly, it isn’t, okay? This scheme has been fully debated, decided upon, and now the council has been forced to defend its position through that democracy, and quite frankly, Mr Mayor, I am happy to spend whatever it takes to win the argument. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lee. Councillor Band?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, just two points. I think, looking closely at the wording of this recommendation, as the borough solicitor has pointed out, this is not a commitment to spend money, but it seems to me entirely reasonable to set up a provision for some of the issues we have in front of us, now we are being forced to go down the issue of a judicial review. So, I entirely support this recommendation. Emphasise, it’s not a commitment to spend money, it’s a commitment to set up a provision, and I see nothing wrong in doing that at this particular time, it seems to me entirely appropriate. The other thing I’d say in passing, in looking back to the recommendations which we passed in the 24th of May, my recollection and my reading of them... My recollection and my reading of them, there is no timescale attached to those. Certainly, there wasn't a commitment to execute those recommendations by the 18th of October. And I'm sure that the leader and the executive will bring back the conclusions of those recommendations at an appropriate time to council. But as far as the recommendation 32 is concerned, I'm entirely satisfied that it's appropriate and necessary at this stage.
Thank you, councillor Band. Councillor Legall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo councillor Goodrich's sentiment that it is unfortunate that we are finding ourselves in this position where we are having to spend taxpayers' money, or at least make a provision for spending taxpayers' money on what we will robustly defend. I do find it interesting that councillor Hyman says that he is not part of the Farnham Interest Group. But I'm encouraged by his good sense of having withdrawn his amendment, possibly on the basis that he knew he would lose. I would wonder if he might ask his friends in the Farnham Interest Group or East Street Action, or whatever other group is interested in this, whether they would consider saving the taxpayers lots of time and money by withdrawing their judicial review.
Thank you. Councillor Frost.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo what councillor Legall has just said. It's very important that we actually look at this and say, why are we in this situation? There is a certain group of people who feel they know best. Well, I go about the town quite a lot, and I have people saying to me, they don't like it. Why don't you like it? Then they give me a reason. But more people are saying to me, for goodness' sake, councillors, we elect you to get on with it. It was in your manifesto, we elect you to get on with it. Please do get on with it. And I think it's very prudent of us to put this amount of money in to the budget, should we need it. I hope we don't. I hope, as Denise, as councillor Legall has said, that the Farnham Interest Group and their friends might actually decide to withdraw the review. Also involved in the review, of course, is that great group of people, the Farnham Society. I was looking at their website today to see that they are investing money in the review, the judicial review. And I don't know how many people sitting in this room are members of the Farnham Society, but did you know that? And if you didn't, maybe you need to ask the Farnham Society why you weren't consulted on the matter. So I think there are a number of issues here. I want to get on with this. I think we are being prudent. It's unfortunate we have been forced into this position. And I think the people who have forced us into this position need to be ashamed of themselves, because it is ratepayers' money that is being used at a time when money is very difficult to come by for this council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Frost. Councillor Ramsdale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can but agree with all the previous speakers who've identified the reason to put through this recommendation. I would like to point out to those of you perhaps who aren't accountants that it is decidedly normal, good accounting practice to make your best estimate of the worst-case situation right at the beginning, so that the full potential liability is identified in the accounts if at some stage we have to provide accounts to the public. So what we're doing in identifying the worst-case scenario, saying that could cost £250,000, let's provide for that, let's identify those funds, is exactly what all good accountants would be doing. And I'm really pleased that's what our plan is to do.
Thank you. Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wholeheartedly agree with the recommendation that's before us. I won't echo all of the sentiments that have been put forward by several of my colleagues. But I do wonder if, for the purposes of accuracy, do we need to tweak the recommendations that we just remove the Farnham Interest Group completely and just satisfy ourselves with the judicial review? And I just wonder if perhaps we could get some clarity on whether that does need tightening up at all. Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers? Back to the Leader.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think all the speakers have pretty much covered the points that have been raised. And as has been said, we did not bring this judicial review. That has been brought against the council. And we have always pledged that we would robustly defend our position. I don't need to tell you how much we will need that ongoing income stream, as well as the capital sum, and it's a significant income stream. And as a resident myself in Farnham, I'm very saddened, and I think a lot of us are, to see our money having to be used in this way. But that's how it is, unfortunately. This is currently our best estimate in terms of costs, and it's only right and proper that we set this amount of money aside. We're not here to revisit the decision that we made on the 24th. We're here to make a decision on this amount of money being approved and going towards legal costs where necessary. I do agree that, to the points that have been raised, we need some clarity on the recommendation. And to councillor Martin's point, and I hope councillor Martin will be happy to second perhaps my suggestion on words, colleagues, is that we update the recommendation to read, "A further supplementary estimate of £230,000 be approved for external legal costs to defend the council's position brought by the named individuals on the judicial review." Is that...? I'm just looking for...
I'm happy to second.
I'm getting various people putting their hands up. Councillor Legall.
I'm just wondering whether it might be advisable to keep it even simpler, and that we simply, after a judicial review, and I'd be interested to hear from our legal friends, after judicial review ended, there are full stop, not brought by... That we don't specify who it's brought by, because there doesn't seem to be any clarity on that at the moment. And I wouldn't want us to be walking into a trap.
Thank you.
I'm happy to take that. The Borough Solicitor, can I just look for... Yeah, shall we take the amendment as Mrs. Legall has then set out? Is that...? Fine. And I believe, Mrs. Legall, you have a second. Thank you, councillor Frost.
In that case, since we have an amendment, does anybody wish to speak to the amendment? In that case, I move to the recommendation, which is that a... I'm getting all sorts of advice from both sides. We have to vote on the amendment. So first of all, those in favour of making the amendment, which is to delete the last six words and the brackets from the recommendation that you have in front of you. Those in favour of the amendment? Overwhelming, thank you very much. Now, the recommendation itself now reads, "A further supplementary estimate of £230,000 be approved for external legal costs to defend the council's position on the judicial review." Those in favour? Thank you very much. Those against? Abstentions? We will record your abstentions, thank you. Would someone like to call back the councillors who left this chamber? Thank you. I understand, Leader, that there are some speakers listed for part two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Part two, which is the matters of report. I have councillor Hyman down for item 52.
Councillor Hyman.
Thank you, actually. I did write down a question which I was going to ask, which I've lost. But the essence of it was that, Mr. Mayor, at the executive meeting, when I queried this and suggested that to residents it's going to look like the executive or council are trying to limit, the executive trying to limit scrutiny by only allowing a couple of subcommittees, the leader gave a response which appeared to be completely contrary to the recommendation, but which was a very welcome response, saying that there was no intention of doing that and any amount could be asked for. And they had no intention of restricting scrutiny or the amount of work that scrutiny could do if it wanted to. And I would like the leader, if she would... My question was, would the leader please reiterate that to the members here? Because obviously, not everybody will have watched the webcast of the executive or have been there. So would the leader kindly please reiterate the statement that was made at the executive meeting? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. In fact, the asking of questions in part two is not really what you're supposed to do. However, I will ask the leader on this occasion if she wishes to make a comment.
Councillor Hyman, I made very clear at the executive meeting the exact points, and I've no further comments to make. Thank you.
We move on then to ask whether the council is happy to agree the minutes of the executive held on the 6th of September. Thank you very much. The executive of 27th of September 2016, that's on page 15 of your agenda. Leader, would you like to move the minutes, please?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm pleased to present the minutes of the 27th of September, and I believe I have a second.
I'm happy to second.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Part one of these minutes covers the local government funding update and the four-year grant settlement. The figures that are shown on page 17, can I ask that those are actually corrected? In the table just below item 57.3, they actually should be thousands, not millions, clearly. Without making too much light of it, we are in a difficult position. We're going to find ourselves in more challenging times, but luckily, not quite that challenging. There are three recommendations, and I think it was raised earlier that one of the recommendations, there was a query on the number of one of the other recommendations. Can I just ask if as a point of order we need to amend that? Please, Mr. Taylor. Thank you.
I think that the numbering obviously will progress throughout the whole of the agenda. I suspect that the simplest way to deal with it is simply to call them 33 and 33A. If that's agreeable?
That's absolutely fine. We'll call them 32A and 32B, and then when it comes to the actual minutes...
We've already had 32. We need to be 33.
Okay, that's fine.
33A and 33B. Okay. So do we have anybody who wishes to speak on this item? Councillor Hyman.
Just very briefly, there was an issue which I raised, and it's in paragraph 57.4. I think it says that the efficiency plan must be prepared and published by 14th of October. We don't go back in time. And the leader did, in case anybody's wondering, inform us that an arrangement had been made with CLG, presumably the Treasury, to allow us to agree that tonight. Fully supportive of this recommendation. Do not like the way that the government is treating us and the way that they expect us to make our decisions, because we certainly don't really have enough information. But we don't have a choice, it's blackmail. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Hyman. Councillor Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a very sensible suggestion. Certainly for the first three years, from 16, 17 to 18, 19, on the basis that it's so much easier to run a council when you know the bad news well in advance and don't have the bad news just before Christmas or just after Christmas or some other date like that. But I sincerely hope that with the other councils in Surrey and elsewhere, that we do try and do our best to make it clear to the council our objection to the principle of a negative grant. In other words, we make a grant to the government, which does seem to be the wrong thing to do. And I wish all the best to all those concerned to get that message across. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I suspect this is a case of better the devil you know moving forward. This does give us financial certainty for a few years. And I think happy is perhaps the wrong word, but I am happy to support the recommendations such as they are. And I look forward to the leader and I fighting hard for our case collectively with the other boroughs and districts from around Surrey to get that fourth-year figure positive, ideally, but less negative perhaps. Thank you.
Any further speakers? No, in that case, can we move to the recommendations on page 19? 33A, 33B, and 34. Are they agreed? Thank you very much. Leader.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Item 58 is the General Fund Property Investment Strategy. And we've already discussed at length and are aware of the financial constraints and difficulties facing us as a council. And the whole object of the investment strategies is to use the council's resources to invest in income-generating assets. It's something that was widely identified by the ONS committees as a way forward. It's something that a number of other districts and boroughs, as well as county councils and local authorities, do to actually generate income. And we, as a council, need to now look at this and try and take this forward. The proposal is that it would be a very strictly regulated investment board. And it would be made up of, myself is the leader, the portfolio holder for property, who would be the chairman, the portfolio holder for finance, portfolio holder for economic development. And we would also, and we will also have on the board a non-executive member, who will be councillor Mike Band. So a good, varied, and diverse make-up of this board. Clearly, you will see that there are very, very detailed and comprehensive terms of reference. And what you will also be aware of is that we will be taking very detailed advice from our officers on this. And I certainly, along with my colleagues, look forward to bringing forward and bringing exciting proposals to you. There is, and for obvious reasons, we need to work through scheme... We need to work on a scheme of delegation here. It stands to reason, we're talking about commercial investments, we're talking about the need at times to move quickly to ensure that we can tie up legal agreements and move forwards with various deals. And so the only effective way to do business is through a scheme of delegation. Don't forget, as I said... Don't forget, as a council, we frequently, within our recommendations, have schemes of delegation, so this is no different. And as I say, I commend the recommendations to council. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Leader. I have councillor Frost.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Mayor. And about time too, is all I can say. And it is nice that in fact this executive has listened to a recommendation from corporate that we need to do this. But you are quite right, we need to act quickly. We cannot see an opportunity and then find nine months down the line, we still haven't got it through CMT or wherever it's going. And as a result of that, we lose our opportunity. So we do need a good, robust scheme of delegation. And I'm delighted that councillor Band has agreed to go on this. He was an excellent portfolio holder for finance. And I think this will actually help us, but we must act quickly. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, councillor Frost. Councillor Hall?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to give members a little further information about the nature of the delegation. Essentially, what will happen is there will be parameters for decisions which can be delegated and ones which cannot. So it will be for a maximum size, predefined net yield limits and certain geographies. So larger transactions which fall outside these parameters of delegation will obviously come to council and through normal ONS. So the delegated portion is apart from what you might call sort of flow or vanilla transactions. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Briefly, I'm of course of the portfolio member for economic development. I applaud this motion and I would like to bring members' attention to recent newspaper reports, including one in today's, which states that Guildford Borough Council, our near neighbour, has invested £23 million in commercial development. I look forward to generating millions rather than thousands to match the large hole in our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bolton. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Investment boards, as I'm sure many people know, are a very common vehicle in both the public and private sector. So this is far from leading edge stuff. And I think this follows very neatly on from the property strategy that this council approved earlier on in the year. And as has already been said, enables the council to act speedily in a rapidly changing sphere to enable us to close that funding gap in our budget. The proposed initial set-up fund, I believe, is sensible and enables the board to get started without tying ourselves in unnecessary knots of bureaucracy. Councillor Hall has already covered some of the parameters of this board and I believe this is a really great advance for this council to become just a little bit more self-sufficient. And I too look forward to working with councillor Bolton.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? No, in that case, can we move to the recommendations then, please, on page 23? Leader, would you like to sum up?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think really to sum up, members have recognised that this is a good way forward. We need, as I say, to generate income, both to plug that hole that we've got coming upon us rapidly from central government, but also so that we can actually add value where possible to our services. So it's twofold. It's not just about making money. It's about actually the way that we're going to use that money as well. Because it's important we remember why we're actually here as a council and as councillors. And that is ultimately to provide services for all our residents. We've got some really good examples from a number of our other neighbouring districts and boroughs. Woking, councillor Bolton's spoken of Guildford. And we all know the fantastic achievement of Spellthorn buying the BP site just a couple of weeks ago. So I don't know that we'll be buying a BP site in the first month, but we have to aim high. So with that in mind, can I ask that the recommendations that are before you, I commend them to council. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Leader. So there's a nice BP site on the Farnham bypass. Recommendations 35 to 40 on page 23, are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. We move on to 59.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Item 59 covers a matter that obviously has been before executive and has been in the press. It basically relates to a longstanding contractual arrangement that this council and a number, some 70 other councils, had with Thames Water in relation to collection of water charges from council tenants. The details of this issue are in your papers. We have informed the tenants concerned and are already in contact with them. The recommendation now is that offices carry out a detailed financial analysis so that we actually do know the extent of the potential liability and the repayments that we will be looking at. And we estimate that we're looking at a maximum amount of approximately £400,000. And we will earmark that from the HRA in readiness that in the course of the next few months, we will need to obviously repay the tenants concerned. Mr Mayor, there are five recommendations under that item. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Do we have any speakers? Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, very quickly, I don't see any problem with this as far as the council's behaviour or whatever. It's sort of caught in legislation backwards, so we have got to sort it out. The one concern I think that any tenants affected might have looking at the recommendations, and it just seems, if you read 41 to 45, which remain the same numbers, they seem to suggest that this is going to take a long, long time. Now, I would imagine those people, having been paying more than their dues over a number of years, would love to have their repayments by Christmas. It would be a nice thing to do. Is there some way we can just add the word expedite or that it can be? I won't put forward an amendment because it'll get put down, however good it is. But if we can expedite in paragraph, in recommendation 41 or add swift to recommendation 44 or something, that would be very nice, I think. Because it does rather look like we're going to take forever over doing this and it would be nice to give them their money rather sooner than forever. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. Any other speakers? Councillor Frost?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Having just given up as chairman of corporate, which includes housing, let me assure the councillor that the housing department have the best interests of the tenants at heart. You will know that, councillor Hyman. Therefore, it will be done as quickly as it possibly can. But I do believe this is quite complicated. It's not just a question of handing out money. It is very complicated because some tenants do one thing, other tenants do another thing. So from my experience with the housing team, they will do with this as quickly as they possibly can.
Thank you, councillor Frost. Any other speakers? Leader?
Thank you, thank you, Mr Hyman and, sorry, councillor Hyman and councillor Frost, I think, have summed up very well. Just so that we're clear, there are no delaying tactics. I'm not going to stand here and make promises when we have a very large housing stock and a number of properties and tenants who are affected. Because I think that we need to manage people's expectations here and it would be wrong of me to make promises that certainly I can't keep. What I can tell you is that officers have already started the process. They are moving on with that process in a timely fashion. But we are not going to rush and risk making any mistakes or errors. To councillor Frost's point, it's complicated and complex. And as far as I'm concerned, we will work through this and those who are owed money will have that money repaid. We have made that pledge, we will honour that pledge. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Leader. So the recommendations are on page 25, numbers 41 to 45. Are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Move on to item 60. Councillor Vier is just leaving.
Mr Mayor, item 60 relates to the appropriation of land at the Bourne Recreation Ground. It's quite a detailed report before you members and I'll take it that you've read the points raised. This has gone on for quite a while, this particular item. And we're now at a stage where finally we can actually hopefully move forward. And the group concerned who want to actually take on the land on behalf of the council, manage it for the local people, can actually start to move forward. But I can see gesturing from councillor Coburn, who's the other ward councillor. So I think perhaps she'd like to speak at it further. So, late councillor Coburn.
Thank you, Leader. Mr Mayor, by your gesture, that means I can stand. Yes, as councillor Potts has just said, this has been dragging on. And I do appreciate that in this council we have to get it right. And I do know that we're surrounded by people who are waiting to shoot us down if we get it wrong. But there comes a point where really you are so frustrated with the lack of speed. We have here a development that is going to benefit so many people. That's not going to cost the local people anything. It's a win-win, win-win-win situation in every sense of the words. And I really hope now that we can see some progress on this. I do promise you that the majority of the board will really appreciate this. I've said, I think, in this council chamber before now, Friday night, go down and you'll see the inadequacy of the present facilities and the sheer number of people that are going to benefit from the new facilities. And when I say Friday night, that's the young people. The older ones of us will probably benefit more on a Tuesday afternoon, say. Who knows? But it's going to be such a good facility and really it has taken so long. Again, as I say, I appreciate why, but please, 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 can we have no more hiccups? Can we just get on with this? We're talking a very small amount of land. It is being appropriated for the benefit of the community. Please, can we move it forward as quickly as possible? And I will send out an invitation when it's up and running. You can all come, you can all have a drink at my expense. Because I should be so happy that, you know, that we have the thing up and running. So put it in your diaries. I've no idea which year I'm talking about. But I hope it's going to be fairly soon. It's really a splendid proposition and wonderful for the board. So thank you very much indeed.
Thank you, councillor Coburn. Any other speakers? Leader?
Mr Mayor, thank you. Councillor Coburn summed up very well. I know when I was at the Bourne show very recently, the positive feedback on this, you know, from everyone, all the locals, was really good. Unfortunately, we have to navigate our way through something called village green legislation, which can be quite cumbersome at times. But we are getting there and we are almost there. And I, like many members, am looking forward to a drink on councillor Coburn. So without further ado, Mr Mayor, there are two recommendations to that item on page 30. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. So recommendations 46 and 47 on page 30, are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Item 61. Leader?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Item 61 is the cultural strategy for Waverley, 2016 to 2026. Again, quite a lengthy report and I know this also came before ONS. The ONS committee gave very detailed feedback. I know there are plans ahead for the workshops, which will start in the autumn, to sort of move forward at this next stage. And to this item, there are three recommendations, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Are there any speakers to this issue? Councillor Else?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. The National Planning Policy Framework introduced in 2012 states that the planning system should take account of and support local strategies to improve cultural wellbeing for all as one of the 12 core principles underpinning planning and at local level. This is why you have before you tonight Phase One of a new cultural strategy for Waverley. This is the first white paper involving culture in more than 50 years and it places a real importance upon strong local leadership, cultural vision and effective partnerships. This vision needs to be strongly embedded in local authorities' policies and plans. This is the aim of the cultural strategy. To put it into context, whilst we welcome the provision of community centres and other community facilities in new planning applications, we need to ask the question, what then? What is going to happen in these spaces? And that is exactly where a strong cultural strategy will prove its worth. Those facilities which are already in existence, the village halls, the day centres, the museums, leading to working directly with schools, the libraries, maltings, Cranley Arts Centre, and those which are yet to come, all need to be filled with meaningful community activity if they are to realise their cultural potential. The cultural strategy will state that we will continue to respond to and identify community needs, taking our cultural ethos out into the community and encouraging groups who work with young people, older people and vulnerable people, in fact, all people, to produce well-planned activities which will enhance their lives and encourage social interaction and engagement. It's important to understand that our cultural strategy will be developed in a way that acknowledges that local authorities' budgets for culture have reduced and that austerity in the public sector is set to continue in the future. We must recognise and accept for now that there may not be large venues in our borough which are costly to build and maintain. But there is undoubtedly evidence to support the fact that cultural traditions, celebratory events and social interaction bring a special value that help make places more desirable in which to live and work. Participation in cultural activities can increase physical and psychological health and wellbeing and offer meaningful opportunities for social engagement. Our aim will be to work towards creating and enabling all forms of culture, ensuring that all sections of the community of Waverley have access to such activities within the borough. This is a fundamental principle that will underpin every aspect of this 10-year strategy and its delivery. Successful communities thrive where there are inclusive, sustainable and worthwhile cultural experiences. Our cultural strategy, if agreed this evening, to carry on will encompass this aim. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Else. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This does seem to me to be an example of some degree of success from the Community Overview and Scrutiny Committee system because we did address this. It was a very unmanageable document when it came forward. There are still 56 pages left. 78 of them have been removed since. So it's basically all been chopped out. I'm not entirely sure it doesn't need more work. If I can refer members to page 68, where it tells you in the box there that we've got trips and treats. trips and treats, pen portrait, Mike, Carrie, William and Carol. And Mike's 48 and Carrie's 45, they have two children, William who's 12 years old and Carol who's lost the E of the end of her name already, all live near Cranly. We've got pages of this remaining. And if I were to read it out to you, you'd think I was, I don't know, barmy or something. I think there's more work to do. But the issue here, so feeling very sorry for Carol, buying everybody a drink and losing the end of her name. We've got recommendation 48, Phase One of the cultural strategy which incorporates the evidence report and outcomes framework produced by the consultants, be adopted. So we're being asked to adopt this, but by the time we get to 50, we're saying that we're going to produce a summary version. 49 says that we're going to have workshops to identify priorities for action and investment. I'd rather look, I don't know whether I'm looking at this backwards, whether it's just me, but should we not be writing it and finishing it and deciding on our outcomes or goals before we adopt it? It does seem a little bit odd to me. Could we change the word adopted to endorsed or something, just so we don't seem so silly? And there are a number of issues with it. I won't go further than that actually, Chairman, we've got a long evening and that's enough. But I really do think we should write it before we adopt it. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Hyman. Any other speakers? Councillor Byam?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, yes, I read the document with great interest and found quite a lot of missing elements from Bramley. I've not quite understood why they've been missing, possibly because of our own lack of response to a request for information. I clearly am not sure. But I've been reassured that, and I am preparing the extra information that will be needed to update, as has already been said, it's a living document and it will grow and change over the years. And I will be moving forward that. I would suggest that other parish council areas or whatever wards, look at it themselves and look at the map and see what is written there and seeing whether you believe that there are things there which are not mentioned, things in your ward or whatever that are not mentioned, that ought to be mentioned. Exactly how that benefits that particular area, I'm not absolutely clear. But clearly it would be worthwhile having a complete assessment of all the things that are there. I don't say that Bramley want to be controlled by the Borough Council, but it would be last to be recognised for the range of things that we have. For instance, we have a community library. It's not even mentioned in the document. How that got missed out, I don't know. Of course, it was a county council library, it's now supported by the county council but run by the community, the parish council. So I just look forward to adding my stuff to and I recommend that other people actually do the same at some stage. If there's things missing, please put them forward.
Thank you councillor Byam. Any other speakers? Sorry councillor Ramsdale, I have already got you down.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm a little puzzled at the suggestions that were coming from the other side of the room in that I wonder if, because we're trying to push ahead and get the action plan to happen, he's saying, oh, it's all too soon, you haven't written the document. But if we were saying, oh, we're going to spend days or weeks or months adding to this document and rewriting it, he'd then be complaining that we weren't making our minds up and getting on with the actions. Certainly the view was taken at community ONS that it wasn't a perfect document, it could be added to, as indeed the councillor in front of me has just said, it is a living document. But please, 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 can we make the decisions to get on, identify the actions and then do them? Because it's the actions, not the document, that will help our residents achieve better from our cultural strategy or cultural action plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Leader, would you like to sum up? Okay, the leader doesn't wish to sum up. So the recommendations are on page 36, that's 48, 49 and 50. Are they agreed? Thank you. 62?
Mr Mayor, thank you. Item 62 is Local Plan Part Two Resourcing. It's again quite a lengthy document, but we're at a stage now where we're now starting to, the preparation for part two of our local plan. Members will be aware that we're now very close to the submission stage of part one. And as a result of this, we are coming forward, we'll need to look to around £200,000 in terms of the costs of additional resource to actually fund moving forward with part two. And there are three recommendations that are before you members and I commend those to council. Thank you.
Thank you Leader. Does anyone wish to speak on this issue? No? Leader, do you wish to say anything else? In that case, we move to the recommendations on page 38, numbers 51 to 53. Are they agreed? Thank you very much. Item 63?
Mr Mayor, thank you. Item 63 is the proposal to strengthen the finance system support capacity. And there are two recommendations to that. I don't propose to go into a great deal of detail, especially about officer posts. But the whole reason behind this really is to take the opportunity to strengthen the council's financial system, especially in terms of technical capacity within the finance team, which has arisen as the result of a recent retirement and a vacant senior accountant post. I think that's all I have to say on it and there are two recommendations. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Does anyone wish to speak on this one? In that case, we move to the recommendations, page 39, numbers 54 and 55. Are they agreed? Thank you very much. We move on to item 65. This item was in exempt, but I believe we can discuss the issue without having to go into exempt. You have the recommendations on your pink pages. I believe, yes, exempt, annex three. Leader?
Mr Mayor, I think you've actually summed it up. I don't intend, unless members want to go into exempt on this, it is a position, I know there were some questions raised at the executive, but they were dealt with. And unless anyone has specific questions, you have the report and it is an HR matter. But as I say, if anyone does want to go into exempt, then have to take more detailed questions.
Are there any people wishing to speak? No, in that case, the recommendation number 56, is that agreed? Thank you very much. Move on to part two.
Mr Mayor, thank you. Moving to part two, a number of matters of report. I've been notified that there are speakers on item 68, which is the funding schemes for voluntary sector organisations and the proposed changes for 2017/18. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you Leader. Councillor Bolton?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I, once again, would like to remind all members that we as a council are under extreme financial pressure as a result of cutbacks in current and proposed government funding. In addition, various sources of income from significant regeneration are taking time to come to fruition. The executive identified at a previous meeting that there could be, could be a possible saving in the grants made to the community. I emphasise the words could and possible. However, it is our hope, in fact even more than our hope, our strong desire that we will maintain our substantial budget for grants. At present, we give nearly three quarters of a million pounds. And if we make any decision to the contrary, it will only be made as a last resort. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bolton. Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have no other comments to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ramsdale?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I wanted to speak because the recommendations here, or the resolutions here, are slightly at odds with what was discussed and was the view of most people at the community ONS. And I wanted to just, kind of wanted to understand why that might be. I'm very thankful to councillor Bolton for the clarification he's given on the 18050 number. And I would personally be really pleased if we don't see a diminution in the ability to make small grants to organisations that rely on them. The other thing I didn't really understand, and I wondered if perhaps one of the exec could comment on is, is why we're having one-year service level agreements when, for the charity's point of view, the whole point about having, the big advantage of having a service level agreement is they have a number of years' worth of certainty about the funding. One year seems to be a rather pointless exercise, but perhaps I've missed something somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, councillor Ramsdale's just raised the point which we spoke about at the ONS meeting and so I endorse his comments there, I do have the same concerns. Just a matter that if, it looks to me as though the way that the council is going is slightly concerning as we appear to be taking over care of the elderly from the National Health Service with the wellbeing agenda that's going on. And disability challengers, so called challengers, for instance, appear not to be getting any grants. It looks like we may be swaying away from funding younger groups and that might concern me. I know we still do a lot of that sort of funding through the parish council, so I'm not excessively concerned. But I think we do, you know, we need to keep an eye on this because it's obviously something which local organisations and volunteer groups do rely upon. So thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Frost?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, I'm very unhappy about these resolutions. It, the whole business of reducing the service level agreements to one year is an anathema to me, quite frankly. This council has always prided itself on it having three-year service agreements. And I think that's what we should do, with the first year being a year when we look at how they're working, but we actually offer them three years. They then know what they're doing. I mean, if you look at the fact we're talking about the Gostrey Centre, Age UK Surrey, Voluntary Action South West Surrey, I think it would be very useful and I would like to see this matter being redisgussed. I know we can't change things for six months, but I think the decisions were made without really thinking them through and what we have been doing all the time. I don't like one-year service agreements, I prefer three years. That is the tradition of this council. As it happens, we have no statutory duty to actually give any grants. So if we really want to save money, let's cut all the grants. But we wouldn't want to do that because we are a caring council and we do care about our elderly and we do care about these groups who are very valuable within our society. And that's what we should continue to do. We should make sure they are going to help us. The amount of work those groups put in is worth more than the money that we're paying them. So I think we should make sure we continue. And I am appalled that we've put the could in, save £18,000, for goodness sake, in three quarters of a million, what's 18,000? I think that was an unnecessary entry there and I would like the group to go back and reconsider.
Thank you councillor Frost. Councillor Gray?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to commend the council for their funding schemes for the voluntary sector. I think that, as councillor Bolton pointed out, we are under constraints with money and it's good to see this council putting this so high on the priority list. I also wanted to support, I mean, based on my understanding, this question of 12-month SLA. As I understand it, we're talking about a 12-month SLA going into a three-year SLA, followed by one. In my experience, if we are going to look at getting value for money and introducing service level agreements across the board, they're quite stressful periods for organisations. There's a certain amount of learning would be done with some, others would be very familiar with the process. And to allow both organisations to be able to have a 12-month followed by a three-year commitment seems to me to be very sensible indeed. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gray. Councillor Bolton, do you wish to sum up?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Briefly, I would like to thank councillor Gray for his excellent presentation to clarify the SLA matter. Secondly, and only secondly, we have not yet got £110 billion to replace our excellent National Health Service, which is led by our excellent Member of Parliament, Mr Jeremy Hunt. Thank you.
I'm not sure you're supposed to introduce new material in your sum up.
I must apologise, Mr Mayor. I have been slapped on the wrist.
Thank you very much. Move on to the next item.
Item 71 is the installation of replacement windows and doors in Lower Church Lane in Farnham. And I believe that there is a speaker to that item.
Councillor Williamson?
Thanks very much, Mr Mayor. I'm very conscious of the time, so I'm going to be very brief. But I did raise this at the executive meeting and I just thought it was worthy of repeating a little of it at tonight's meeting. It might seem trivial, but I think it's really quite important. It's a plastic application, it's a, not a plastic, it's a planning application, as the, as Leader said, for plastic windows on the doors, windows and doors on properties on Lord Church Road in Farnham in the conservation area. It's really interesting at the executive meeting because the item before was for the Dunstall Conservation Area, beautiful report. The officers, everyone associated with it, should be commended for producing a really good report. And then we came on to this item. And these documents, these conservation documents, this is absolutely in the centre of Farnham Conservation Area. These documents should be used, they should be, they should form a basis of the decisions that the council is making and it uses with its subcontractors. In this instance, Waverley allowed plastic windows to be put on by its contractor into its houses. They have subsequently been, or are in the process of being removed and replaced. So in effect, the town council, our council, we're going to have to pay for it twice. I was told at the time that the reason we had to do that was because the contractor had gone bankrupt. What I've subsequently found out, which I'm really quite distressed about, is that we knew 18 months, at least, for 18 months before the contractor went bankrupt. So had we been a little speedier in our actions, we could have got them replaced. So the lessons, my point is, there are lessons to be learnt on these little exercises. One, act quickly, which we've heard several times this evening. And the second thing is, and most importantly, we produce these reports at great cost to the council, compliment ourselves on what a great job they are, and then leave them on shelves and don't action them. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Williamson. Will we move on to item 72?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Item 72 is the submission of a planning application for Farnham Town Football Club's changing rooms. And I believe that there is a speaker to that item.
Councillor Hyman?
Thank you, finally, Mr Mayor. This item has come before us because the council did these works, which I think we're all in favour of, the Farnham Town Football Club having better changing facilities, but did it without obtaining net re-planning consent. And having been brought up on this by, having had the matter raised by a member of the public, or the solicitor of a member of the public, I understand, the council has agreed that it does need to put in a retrospective planning application. What concerns me most is that when you look at the officer report that went to the executive, and I raised it at the executive meeting, the reason being given is what I can only call a falsehood. It simply tells us that the situation has changed, because we were going to be moving the football club back into the memorial hall after it was finished, but now we've decided we're not going to, we're going to move Waverley Training Services in instead. Well, if you go back through the, there are a number of press releases from Waverley over the past year and a half or so, and if you look at the planning application that went in last year, it's absolutely clear there was no intention whatsoever. So, you know, it would be nice if the council could simply state the facts rather than trying to make up some reasons in order to cover their embarrassment. The issue that I did raise was this is an enabling development, as it said in the committee papers, for the memorial hall development, which is enabling development, and it should be EIA development. And I was told that I would have a response from this after the executive meeting, but I haven't received that in respect of the standing and the need for EIA development, which of course is also required for the memorial hall works, yet the council is carrying on without it. But for the football club, it's great, and we're happy for them. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. Leader.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In response to councillor Hyman's points, to be clear, this is an application to submit a planning application. Councillor Hyman did have a response, sent his questions from the executive, but I'll ensure that that is sent to you again in the morning, councillor Hyman. If I could ask Mr Taylor to please make a note of that, and that will come out to you. But just so that we're absolutely clear, in terms of your comments on EIA and the need for an EIA, this has been considered, and the council as the local planning authority has already formally agreed that the development is not an EIA development. But you will receive an answer to your questions, so you've got it formally in writing as you requested. That concludes my response to that item. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
We've come to the end of the minutes of the executive held on the 27th of September 2016. Are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. We move on to item nine, which is the minutes of the audit committee held on the 13th of September 2016, which is on page 105 of your agenda papers. Councillor Gray will present these minutes from his seat in the chair.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm pleased to present the minutes of the audit committee meeting held on the 13th of September 2016, and I have a second.
Please, a second, Mr Mayor.
That's good. There's no items to consider in part one, but I believe there is a speaker for part two. Mr Mayor.
Councillor Frost.
Oh, God. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I'd like to have a, say a few words on item 19, the external audit findings report, and offer my congratulations to the officers, to the finance department, and the audit committee, because I understand from this that the auditors found and praised the council for the very high standard of the financial statements, for providing them in advance of the statutory deadline, et cetera, et cetera. It's down there, you can read it, but congratulations to all concerned. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Frost. Councillor Gray.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you, councillor Frost, for those comments. I fully endorse that. I think the officers and staff did an excellent job this year, and you'll see in the minutes that they are actually rehearsing to do it even faster in future, because we have a new requirement coming forward. So this is one part of Waverley that is going fast. Thank you. And that concludes the minutes of the audit. Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. We move on to the item 10, minutes of the licensing and regulatory committee held on the 22nd of September 2016. I'm going to time councillor Inchboll to see whether his presentation is longer than the meeting.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I am pleased to present the meeting minutes of the very brief licensing and regulatory committee held on the 22nd of September, and I believe I have a second.
Thank you, and I'm pleased to second Mr Mayor.
There are no items to consider in part one, and I have received no request to speak in part two, and that concludes the minutes. Was that brief enough, Mr Mayor?
Very, very brief. You did it well, then, thank you. Are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Item 11, minutes of the standards panel held on the 10th of October 2016, which was sent to you separately. Yellow Pages, councillor Michael Goodrich to present.
Mr Mayor, I have pleasure in presenting the minutes of the standards panel held on the 10th of October 2016. I have a second.
Please, a second, Mr Mayor.
Mr Mayor, there is one item in part one, which relates to the review of member conduct arrangements for dealing with standards, allegations, and councillor's planning code. The amendments are really to tidy up all three codes, to take into account any matters that have arisen since this code came into operation, using our previous monitoring officers' experience and advice, and also clarifying any ambiguities. It's really nothing new, but is there to assist all those that need to refer to this code. And I just mentioned one thing, you will see the amendments are highlighted and underlined. Ignore the large print that occasionally appears, that will disappear. It should be the normal print size, rather than large print size, like on page 13, for example. Thank you.
Are there any speakers to this? In that case, we move to the recommendations, which are, I have them as page nine, is that what everybody else has? Good. Recommendations one, two, and three. Are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much.
Mr Mayor, I have no questions under part two, which may be for the fact there's nothing in part two. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, councillor Goodrich. Are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Right, we move to agenda item 12, the Local Government and Housing Act 1989, Local Governments (committees and political groups) Regulations 1990. These are on page 115. Leader.
Mr Mayor, thank you. You'll see before you, colleagues, starting on page 115, the details and the breakdown following the recent election of the committees at Waverley. You will then see, following that breakdown, starting on page 118, the actual detailed make-up of those committees. Colleagues, you can take the report as read, however, on page 121, I would like to draw to your attention an amendment under the Western Area Planning Committee, where councillor John Williamson, it is my understanding, will be standing aside, and councillor John Ward will be taking that place. I have no more to say on that particular report on agenda item 12, Mr Mayor, and commend it to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Is this agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. I have not been advised that we need to discuss anything in exempt, so item 13 will not be considered, and this meeting is now closed. However, do not move.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We'll now hold short meetings of the council as the trustee of the Shuttermill Trust and the U伯Quest. So, on the Shuttermill Trust papers, item one, minutes, can members as trustees confirm the minutes of the meeting which took place on the 15th of December 2015 as a correct record of that meeting? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item two, apologies, they are as noted at the beginning of this evening's council meeting. Item three, declarations of interest, in accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct, do members have any interest they wish to declare? Thank you. Item four, annual accounts, can I please invite councillor Jed Hall to introduce the report and move the recommendation?
Thank you. Councillor Inchboll and councillor Goodrich have clearly set the standard for getting their papers through speedily, so I'll try not to keep as longer than I have to. Members, we have a report before us, which we need to consider in our capacity as trustees. The report's fairly straightforward, and councillor Gray is going to comment as chairman of Waverley Audit Committee. The first up is the Shuttermill Trust, on page three. As an overview, the trust has around £157,000 worth of reserves, which is pretty much the same as it was last year. It's paid out £200,000 towards the refurbishment of the leisure centre. Grant Thornton have audited the accounts, and their opinion is in annex to page 17. The recommendation is to approve the report and accounts on page four.
Thank you. Councillor Gray.
Thank you. Some twelve months ago, the council gave powers to the audit committee to actually look at these trusts. The audit committee considered the trusts from the point of view of Waverley into the trust, and also the report and audit comments that have come out of it, and they have got nothing to say on matters concerning, but there was one point that the audit committee felt that trustees should look at, and that is that in the policy for reserves, the amount of reserve is down as reasonable, reasonable reserves, and the audit committee recommended that the executive quantifies that reserve in terms of money, so that it's made clear what that policy means. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. We now move to the meeting of the Joseph U伯Quest. Can members as trustees confirm the minutes of the meeting which took place on 15th of December 2015 as a correct record of that meeting?
Agreed.
Thank you. Apologies are as previously noted. In accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct, do members have any interest they wish to declare? Thank you. Item four, annual accounts, can I please invite councillor Jed Hall to introduce the report and move the recommendation?
Thank you. Okay, the U伯Quest, as an overview, the trust has around 1.2 million of unrestricted reserves, it paid out £85,000 in car park improvements for college gardens, and it has 640-plus land costs to build three new properties in Farnham. It should be noted that these costs had not been incurred by the 31st of March 2016. Grant Thornton have audited the accounts, and their opinion is in annex to on page 17. The recommendation is to approve the report and accounts on page four.
Thank you. Councillor Gray.
Thank you. I'll repeat what is said on the Shuttermill, that the audit committee have no areas of concern to bring forward to this council, and they do recommend that the reserve policy is quantified and changed from a reasonable amount. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
There are no exempt items to consider, so the meeting is now closed.
Thank you very much. We've concluded the events of the evening. You are very welcome to join me in the parlour after the meeting.
Please rise whilst the mayor chief leaves the chamber.